All right, roll it.
I'll call the meeting of planning and zoning commission, the city of Bisbee, November 21st, 2024, 5:30 PM. I'll do a roll call. Mike Avlin, present. Charles Dellinger, present. David Cobb, present. Douglas Dunn, present. Alicia Spirity, present. Sandy Housman, here. Doug Taylor, present. Also want to welcome Pete Skinner, Councilman Pete Skinner, who is taking over from Mel. Here is our latest on the city council.
Here.
And we have staff here, Javi and Emmanuel. Agenda one is introduction, Charles Dellinger. Would you kind of introduce us yourself to us? Well, I'm going to turn to you here. What brought you to Bisbee and who are you?
Charles Dellinger, and I retired down to Bisbee about, retired just in June from Intel Corporation. I was a construction project engineer. And I've worked at between Intel and Motorola 37 years. And so it was time to get out. I grew up and lived in Mesa when Mesa was a small. It became four and a half million people here. And I needed to get away. So I am an Arizona, I just can't do that.
Alicia, would you want to introduce yourself to Charles here?
Hey, Charles, I'm Alicia. I've been in Bisbee almost four years now. Coming up, oh, it's my anniversary, actually. My background is development, planning and zoning, getting permits all across the nation for renewable energy, multi-bandwidth engineering. I'm in Bisbee and I love it and I'm here to contribute. And we have a great team right now.
We do.
I'm Douglas Dunn. I served on the city council for six years and prior to that was on the planning and zoning commission. And now after back on here, I feel this is one of the most productive of the various commissions. And it's a pleasure to have you here. So I associate with David Cobb down here with a shop on Main Street. So I'm a Main Street merchant as well in my retirement.
Sandy?
Sandy Housman, I moved to Bisbee in 2012. And I'm a retired school administrator, purchasing specifically. And moved from a little small mining town in the mountains of Colorado to a small mining town in the mountains of Arizona.
I'm Doug Taylor. I'm a retired architect. I used to be the city planner for Bisbee. And I'm co-owner of the Saturday Market, the business park.
I'm David Cobb. I have a shop on Main Street and I lived in Bisbee five and a half years.
It's nice meeting you all.
Javier, introduce yourself here.
I'm Javier, the building inspector. Been with the city now eight years. Started off with the streets crew and started studying under Joe Ward, our previous building inspector. And now here I am, almost a year in doing building inspections.
And Warren Pete, would you introduce yourself?
My name's Pete Skinner. Moved back to Bisbee about four years ago. Was originally from here as a young boy left after the eighth grade. Went and lived all over the U.S. Went to work in doing government contracting type of work, mostly in Washington, D.C. Got tired of it, punched out here in 2017 and came out to Bisbee for a wedding, killing time. Went and looked at a house just for grins and next thing you know, I'm moving to Bisbee. I'm also a War II council member and owner of Warren Peace Cafe.
Alicia, why introduce yourselves and your staff?
Yeah, hi, I'm Melissa Hartman. I am the city planner convinced to take the job by Doug Taylor. I've been working in the city almost three years now and I've been in Bisbee about 15. And I'm retired also, but Koch's back into work for a while.
Emmanuel, tell them about yourself.
Hi, I'm Emmanuel. I am a planner with the city of Bisbee. I've been here for just over a year. I came out of early retirement. Before I lived in Portland, Oregon, unemployed. Anyway, so yes, I went to U of A, got a master's in urban planning and so now I'm here. Also Doug talked me into coming down here.
They're actually very, two very good people, so I will take the credit.
It was a good one. It's a pleasure having them.
And he plays accordion, I always say. He's the perfect match for Bisbee.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got a band.
Okay, well, thank you. Charles, it's pleasant to have you here. This is a very active group and I hope you'll find it stimulating and rewarding. Agenda item two, public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to allow signage on two semi-trailers located at 1008 West Highway 92 for advertising. Possible recommendation to the mayor and council, consideration of application of a special use permit that would allow signage on two semi-trailers located at 1008 West Highway 92 for advertising. Want to give a staff report?
Okay. This is staff's recommendation for the planning and zoning commission not to grant a special use permit. The zoning code restricts the vehicle signage on parked vehicles or trailers unless primarily used in conducting business, which means they must be mobile and used in the ordinary course of business, not just parked for storage. The zoning code also states in 7.2.6 that a billboard is a freestanding sign exceeding 50 square feet, which is prohibited in all zoning districts. Depending on the size of the trailer, it would likely be considered a billboard. And those signs are prohibited in all zoning districts. It would, it would not be allowed under the vehicle storage restriction, on vehicle signage restrictions. It would also not be allowed if it was greater than 50 square feet. Our office is aware, is aware that the Arizona Department of Transportation has stringent regulations that would prohibit these signs in this area. Also falls under the immediate jurisdiction under AGO. So AGO has their several rules that would not allow it as well.
The applicant is present. You want to speak?
I'm here to represent the applicant. He wanted to put these signs up for advertisement. Been kind of back and forth on it. Started with two semi-trailers. It actually is supposed to be one semi-trailer with two signs. And then he said it was going to be one semi-trailer with a sign. And then he wanted to put another sign on his building. He's just looking to be able to basically push forward some more signage on his property. He's extended his business and the current signage on his building doesn't advertise for all of that. He's added two more licenses to his business and he'd like to have some form of advertising for that. And within the current codes, I don't know how much room is left on his building. So he was looking for a different way of doing it. And this was what he come up with. So that's basically where his ad is more or less is looking for another way of advertising his new branches of business on the property that he already owns.
Thank you. We now declare our public hearing open for public discussion. We're limited to three minutes. So if person or anyone wishes to speak at this point on this issue, please come to the mic and identify yourself.
My name is Shirley Mack. And I own a building next door which has extreme finish on.
1002 West Highway 92.
Good, thank you, Kevin. My husband, my helper. And the information that I received in the mail does not have a hot plan of where it's going to be located. It does not have the size, either the height or the length. Knowing what semi-trailers are, it would be the nearest I could figure, 100 feet long. But that still does not tell me how high it is. It does not tell me how long it is. The signal, there's two posts. And the post on the west side is a corner of my property, which joins Conklin's property. Making an assumption that he's trying to get it as close to the highway as possible, 100 feet from that post and on the property line would block both my business, the extreme finish facility, the real estate office. You cannot see those from the west. I also have a question. Maybe you know the answer, maybe you don't. Does he plan on having a batch plant there? If he's advertising concrete or if he's getting his concrete from, is it there on the facility? Does anyone know?
I have all of those answers. He would not be doing a batch plant. He is concrete finishing. He will order his concrete from a already existing batch plant. And the semi-trailers would be on the west side of his building, not on the east side of his building. That's where he was proposing to put them. Because the east side of his building is used for everyday business, vehicles in and out. Currently, there are some Connex containers on the east side of the building. That is all temporary because there is another, we have something else in motion. And though it were somewhere else, we had to put them there because the day that they got dropped off, somebody had already gone on the other part of the property and spray painted them. So we had to put them there to prevent vandalism. So that whole east side is potentially to be kept clear, except for the temporary units that are there. So that's, I think that was.
Do you know what the setback is from the property line? Because the property line is pretty close to the highway.
As far as a regular building for the front on a commercial property, it is not exactly sure. But I know that it is at least 20 feet from the front of the property. Within city limits, I believe it's 10 feet from the sides. But as far as the temporary stuff, I'm not sure what that is. So that's, I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
Do you know the size of the signs?
Yes, the trailers are.
Not the trailer, the sign.
Well, I'm going to go with, start with the trailer. The trailers are 40, 48 feet long. And the signs are like half of that. So I think the signs were proposed to be 20 feet by eight feet. Should I get that to him here? 20 feet by eight feet, I'm pretty sure was the size.
Kevin, do we have any other questions?
Yes. Just one question. My name's Kevin Tucker. My question is, is your proposal here? I did. I think the proposal here, I don't see, or maybe I just missed it. I got it late. Is it specified specifically on the property where they're going to put it?
Yes, it does say the east side of the building. Correct.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thanks.
No, the west, west side, excuse me, west, yeah, west side, sorry.
My name is Cecilia Wolf. I own the building directly across from Mr. Conklin's. I just want to verify, has been denied?
No.
It's not denied? Okay, because I just don't see why we should look at that from my property. You have enough, enough with the lighting. I understand that. I understand advertising, but that is actually huge, especially when I have businesses and I also have tenants who reside in that building. So it's just, it's pretty sad. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I have some from, that were written. Read. For everybody. Let me just a second. This is from Jennifer Druckman, resident of San Jose. I am sending this message to pass on to the planning and zoning commission. I am not able to attend an upcoming meeting and I want to register my displeasure at the possibility of Conklin Electric having an advertisement the size of two semi-trucks. The business at Highway 92 and Naco Highway already have a huge sign. Already has to do a sign. And a sign the size of two semi-trucks is too large and inappropriately large for any business. Second letter from Diane Wolf and Wendell Hoyt. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the special use permit submitted by Mr. Todd Conklin. We are against granting this permit. We were cut out of the commenting on the zone changing during the pandemic. We have filed concerns about his current signage legality with no response from the city of Bisbee. Excessive lumens all night long despite the Dark Skies Act. Mr. Conklin has also been observed cutting greenery on the AZ DOT right of way and believe he could continue to do so to make this excessive signage visible. For these reasons, we believe this signage is excessive and inappropriate. There are other ways of advertising a business. We please do not recommend approval of this special use permit, sincerely Diane Wolf and Wendell Hoyt. That's it.
Any further comments? I'll close the public hearing. Commission discussion?
I have some questions for Mr. Rodriguez. There are billboards on 92, which is A DOT. And I think it's probably county. That's why they're there.
That's county and free quote property.
And the, in the A DOT, it pre-posed.
Correct.
The, there's a, no. Would the proposed signs violate any of the considerations for issuance as outlined in 3.2.1? Is it code? I think it's page 13 on there, but that's not it. That's what.
3.2.1?
Yeah, out of the list of considerations for the issuance or non-issuance of a special permit.
Yeah, it's over the square footage. If there's going to be a 20 by eight, that's 160 square feet. The max is 50.
I don't remember. Do those say the square footage? I know it does in other parts of them.
Just what you said right now, they're going to be 20 by eight. That just puts you up to 160.
And did we allow, as a P&amp;Z, did we allow Burger King to set up those signs on the fence?
For temporary build?
It sounded like from Mr. Bradberry that this is considered temporary.
I believe it's going to be more permanently.
Okay. But we did give approval to Burger King?
For temporary ones, yes. And they're, they're to the correct size and so this is pretty excessive.
May I address Mr. Bradberry, please? Is there a possibility of, I mean, if he wanted to do a monument sign, two-sided, so that he could do each, you know, each one of his signs? I think the number would be 32 square feet per side. I mean, if he put a monument out there, it would be within code without a special permit.
I haven't had a whole lot of time to be able to discuss all of this with him. It was something that he brought to my attention and I've been extremely busy. I've had a lot of thoughts about what he could do to advertise the addition to his business. So, you know, he's, he's kind of open to whichever smaller signs. We've been back and forth about square footage of all of these different signs. And it's been really kind of a tough deal to figure out exactly what the square footages are. They're allowed within different parameters, different signs, different areas. And so we thought about it. I've definitely thought about it a lot. And that was actually something that I had a conversation with somebody else earlier today about doing a sign like that. You know, and even if there was, you know, because I've, I've looked at those monument signs and the square footage isn't ridiculous. It's, it's actually a pretty good size. And if it's 32 square feet, I hope Burger King's putting in a smaller one. But regardless of that, you know, there's also the parameters about that, about how far apart they have to be and stuff like that. So that's something that, that definitely is in, in my head, that I would propose to him if all else fails.
It's my understanding that a double-sided monument would just be one sign, just one coming one way. Am I ready?
It's a double, double space freestanding monument sign with a maximum area of 32 square feet. Per sign face may be permitted at a single business location.
Yeah.
So I guess, is that something that, do we, I know that this will hold him up if we, you know, wait for another meeting?
Well, I think that regardless of what happens with your guys' decision, you know, if there's another sign to be proposed, it would have to be something that would be, you know, in my opinion, I would like it to be something that's more along the code guidelines so that we don't have to come here and go through all of this. Makes it a lot easier on me, makes it a lot easier on city staff and you guys as well. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, there's, there's that. Because even if, you know, if, if it was, I don't know, I don't want to go too, too far into it. But I mean, I am not objective to putting something else in there. This was something that was just kind of more of a quick and easy way to get his new businesses out there and advertise. As far as it goes for like a temporary deal or whatever it may be, he was planning on putting vinyl sign up there. In my experience, I have vinyl signs for my business that are much smaller that go on the houses. And I'm lucky to get nine months out of those things. And that's in Old Bisbee where we have 40% of the sun that San Jose has. So I can't see it being up for more than six months.
Thank you.
Other commission comments?
I have a couple of questions. So these trailers are currently sitting off 92. Are they in use for storage that help facilitate these new found arms of business?
Yes. All of the, all of the trailers he has there facilitate storage for all of his businesses. The only ones that currently do not facilitate storage are the ones that I mentioned earlier that have vandalism that are going to be on a determined piece of property eventually anyways. So, but all the rest of them are full of storage.
So are they able to be, are the A DOT worthy? Can a tractor click in and move them? Take them on the highway?
At this time, no, they could be made worthy, definitely.
I guess it's kind of this fine line, right? Because if they're being utilized and there's tractors that can tie in, he's going and getting equipment and he happens to wrap these and store them on his property, where do we draw the line between a sign and a business vehicle?
And I've, I asked that question to other city staff earlier today as well, and so.
Because you, the, the, the little work that you read had mentioned about not being utilized for, because like for example, we have another business in town that has a wrap and they utilize that vehicle, but they also park it in various places and get advertising off of it.
Correct.
So just trying to be equal here.
Can I say something?
Yep.
Yes.
So if you wrap it and it's sitting there and it's movable, then it's not a monument. And it's not lit. You're not lighting it at night. At dark, it's just dark. That's the difference in what they're proposing.
It's proposed to be.
Oh, okay. I missed that part.
Yeah, but it says it's a request for temporary, right? Temporary, this is a temporary.
Temporary defined in our code is six months. Those who stay longer than six months, it's no longer temporary.
Okay. And then it has to be either being moved, withdrawn, or whatever.
And for conducted for daily business, it would have to be moved every day.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I don't see that it was listed as temporary.
It said special use.
Does special use, if I may, does special use require temporary?
Special use?
Not necessarily.
Further commission comment? Verify.
If it's going to be temporary, let's say that they do it. I mean, what is the, are they going to be moved every single day out of the site? Because if it's lighted, I mean, it's going to be a tremendous light, especially for traffic going back and forth. It's confusing too.
The, may I? The planning and zoning board could set the timing for temporary. You know, it could be for a month, it could be for a week, it could be for six months, I guess. So if it were temporary, it could set that. But I do think there's a path that, where the signage would be legal without coming for a special permit. That's what I was looking into.
Should I contact, should I call the lawyer and have him weigh in on this?
You can, but I, I don't think it's necessary. And I think from what I'm hearing, Mr. Bradberry might want to drop back and, and replan. Is that anything that you're thinking of?
Well, no. What this does is it allows us to have more time to plan for a permanent sign. And I was not under the impression that this was proposed to be lit. And I don't really see it anywhere.
Is that solar, solar light as part of the attachment?
Okay, okay. So, okay. I didn't see it. But more of a, you know, to me, it's more of a temporary thing while we're figuring out some permit to be able to have an advertisement up there. Any kind of permit advertisement is timely. But from my understanding of this, this could be timely as well. Because even if it's passed, we still have to go through and get A DOT permission as well. So.
You could propose a timeframe that we could consider and that, you know, you could have it until you're signed, you know, you've.
Well, you know, like I had said, these vinyl signs don't hold up that great. I would not want to see that thing up for more than six months because after six months, it's going to really look like crap. So, and it's, you know, this becomes more of an eyesore and more of a distraction. I drive by big things which look decent and I don't mind. But when I drive by big things and they are starting to fall apart, it's a, it's a distraction. So I wouldn't want to see it being permitted by any means.
I'm just going to, well, unfortunately, the public hearing is closed. Yeah, that was.
Okay.
The, what was I going to say? I think we need to look at the monument sign personally in terms of an alternative to this, of which I went down my calendar. Now, I just got to counting now, forgot what I counted. But I think it was like 28 or something like that. Monument signs along 92 from the fire station down to city limits. And there are various heights. And that certainly would be more consistent with what's there now. And you certainly do have a big sign identifying your business on the side of the, of your shed or your, I shouldn't call it a shed, your building there. So this would be an additional signage to, to that. And did I read that ordinance would permit more than one sign?
No, it doesn't. It specifically says that on the linear footage of your building, you times that by one and a half and that gives you your total signage for your building in general. So he's probably at that or even probably over.
No, he's just under that limit.
Okay.
May I ask if, does that mean the monument sign could be added?
Only a monument, but that would, this would be just denied. This application would be not denied and a new application would have to come forward with a, for a monument if they wanted to do that.
I believe there was only one allowed your question.
Well, I was on the list.
I think I read that somewhere, I'm trying to find it.
It's on page forty-six.
One sign, yeah, one sign permitted at a single business location. Page forty-six.
On the first one?
On the seventh.
Well, I should circle that one here.
Hmm, okay, that's, that makes it more difficult.
So we've heard, today, we've heard from, uh, one neighbor directly across the street, and it's, the other, the other neighbor directly across the street, and she's the one that submitted it in writing? Or by email?
By email, yeah, too, and I'm not a hundred percent sure where they are located, but they're in the vicinity.
I think they're directly across the street, okay.
Okay, seven point four. Leading paragraph, commercial manufacturing sign regulation, the last sentence says, no occupancy in this zoning district may have more than three of the following types of signs at any one location.
I see that.
Mm-hmm.
And so then it goes on and talks about signage on the side of the building, as well as freestanding monuments sign, and so I think that that would allow almost anything in person.
Right.
So they're allowed three different signs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but only one mine freestanding?
Well.
Yeah, that says it right here.
But it does not allow, or billboard type signs and others, I don't know.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
And the city doesn't know.
Or, or any signs parked on trailers, so that's what the zoning code states.
But they could, they could have, I know he had an old, years ago, he had a truck that had the name of his business and all that, that was parked quite often in Paige's parking lot. And, um, that was legal, right?
To a certain, yes, it was. For now.
Also, I want to mention that signs on parked vehicles are prohibited.
Yes.
Trailers.
That was on private property, that parking lot is private property.
The one letter we received made reference to, uh, this is kind of a side comment about the trees that are there in front of the building, your building now, that kind of interfere with the division of signage on the side of the building. Who has control of that, of pruning those trees? Is that an issue?
Well, it's, it's his responsibility on his side of the property line. It's ADOT's responsibility on that, the highway side.
I'm assuming for that.
And, you know, the fence lines, it's right in the middle of all that shrillage. Um, he's got probably a good fifteen, twenty feet of shrillage on his side of the fence, and then another thirty feet on the other side of the fence. Um, but as far as it goes for the ADOT getting that cleared, he just has to call them and get the permit, and they'll come out and do it.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion? Staff, would you repeat your recommendation?
Yep. To the staff's recommendation for the planning and zoning commission to not grant this special use permit.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Um, I move that the planning and zoning commission deny to the mayor and council the proposed special use permit to allow signage on two semi-trailers located at one thousand eight West Highway ninety-two for advertising.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a rule called vote. Mike Adlin is not present. Charles Billinger?
What I'm supposed to say, I agree with the motion.
Okay, I have to say, you say aye then?
Aye.
Okay. David Cobb?
Aye.
Okay. Dr. Dunn, aye. Alicia Spearton?
I oppose.
Your opponent, Nay. Danny Huesman?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have, wherever that is. Motion is denied, requested denied. Again, I look forward to proposals coming back to us in terms of.
Yes, no, thank you.
They may use the monument signs, and certainly my observation, I drove up ninety-two, is that there are varying heights. And so certainly there's a president there that would hopefully accommodate your, your needs.
Well, a hundred percent off the record, I was not involved in too much of the, uh, design factor of this, so.
Correct.
If we come to you again, it looks much easier for all of you as well.
Thank you.
It's, uh, I know there's been a hassle there, so.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
You guys have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just text the, the lawyer that we got figured out.
Okay, agenda item three. Public hearing for amendment to the zoning code. Possible recommendations, mayor and council, consideration of proposed amendment to the zoning code, article five. Specific planned zoning, specific planned zoning by adding section five point four infill residential overlay zone R, and five point five mixed-use infill overlay zone M U. Uh, staff report first.
Okay. Uh, hold on just a second, so, um, I have taken what you've said to me, and I have essentially created the, uh, the, the code to insert into the city zoning code for the overlays. And I hope you have all had a chance to take a look at it. Um, it pretty much covers everything that we've talked about for the last several months. Uh, and I have, with the help of Naina and Javier, have created, created some constraints. So, um, essentially, it's a, a lot of what we've been talking about before, essentially, we are allowing, uh, duplexes and apartment houses, nine backyard homes, triplex, fourplex, cottage clusters, and townhouses. Uh, and pretty much, uh, the overlay zone, we've reduced the, the lot size to twenty-five hundred square feet. But, uh, between, you know, we've, I've created a kind of a, a limit, a limit, right? So between twenty-five hundred and four thousand square feet, it, you know, it, it'll allow only a certain amount of units, right? So the larger the lot you have, the more units that will be allowed. And once it gets past a certain size, then you're going to be, it's going to sort of trigger a, um, site planning commission, um, hearing, you know. So essentially, it allows small houses on small lots, and more houses on larger lots. And, uh, so I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the limitations. I've also created, um, some diagrams for the houses, just to kind of give you a general idea. As you can see the pictures, I think pictures are always great. I will plan on adding some more pictures. Uh, I have, um, kind of kept the setbacks and the lot widths. Uh, I'm following a more of a C-two setback, but with a little bit more setback than that zone allows. Um, for the mixed-use commercial infill overlay, I have, uh, created a, a lot of design considerations. You can see I have created a diagram suggesting, um, how it could look, you know, I want to see, um, you know, allowing businesses in the apartments of, uh, above the businesses or behind, putting parking behind some design considerations. Uh, really kind of, uh, pushing for pedestrian-oriented spaces, uh, and also fitting in with the, uh, this, the Bisbee area mobility master plan. So, uh, I want to have, you know, I'm pushing for locations to have, uh, you know, more pedestrian-oriented, uh, kind of like an orientation to the street and to each other. Uh, making sure that, uh, garbage, refuse and recycling areas and loading areas for commercial areas are going to be screened off from residential areas, and the residential areas will still maintain a residential character. Uh, allowing more, for more co- common space, but also allowing for private space. I, um, want to, in, in, in the mixed-use zone, I'm allowing, um, pretty much what's in, allowed in C-two. And I also have created a septic system requirement, so, uh, you know, a, any new buildings will need to attach to the sewer infrastructure in the overlay zones, and if they don't, if they're not within three hundred feet of a, of the infrastructure, they need to do a septic system per test. And in order to, um, to, to kind of show how much their soil would, um, how much, how many facilities it would allow. So essentially, they need to come with us before, if they wanted to do a certain amount, number of units in their septic system per test, only allowed like three units, that would be the, the max that they could use. They couldn't build a whole apartment building if they were on septic. Um, I, uh, also created an element on, well, the influence development incentive. Essentially, we don't have any, um, impact fees right now for new development, but in the future, if we were to, uh, implement them, if they had any, uh, number of affordable units, they could have a waiver of those impact fees. But that's kind of neither here nor there, but it's just considering for the future. Uh, so, uh, also including an element on green storm water infrastructure, so that we don't have a lot of impermeable surfaces and runoff and flooding. So, um, essentially, it's all of what we've been talking about before. And I just wanted to, uh, say that, uh, it's been fun to work on. And then also, you can see that those are the maps right there, which are the same maps that I've included before, so those aren't new. Yeah. Uh. So, that's my take on it right now. So it, you know, and it's very limited, it's going to be a small area, it's going to be a sliver along the current facilities, water and sewer infrastructure, down Nacho Highway, and near, um, Don Louie, the stretch down, down Busy Road and Tin, and sorry, in Bakersville, and in Saginaw. And then Highway ninety-two west. So these are all areas that have a lot of, there's a lot of, um, a lot of buildings there already, but also a lot of open space between all those buildings. So I think that, considering that, um, there's so much room for improvement or, you know, growing, growth in those areas in proximity to the, to the sewer. Uh, we've had some people come to town and developers looking at some spots, and when I've told them about our overlays, they've been very excited. One thing that's very interesting is people want to, they want to run, you know, like sewer and water lines from the street to the property. For example, Sierra Cobra, uh, running those lines are so expensive, we're talking in the hundreds of thousands. So, you know, allowing only one house on a six thousand square foot lot essentially would, I mean, just the, the utilities alone would make that house just so much more expensive for one family. So if you can scale it up, you can create housing for many people, and it, I think it pencils out. So.
Also a bunch of clarification, this is, this is adjustment to our ordinance in terms of allowing for an overlay district.
Yep.
But any overlay district itself, the designation of one would come at a later time. In terms of what specific areas would be designated as, as overlay district.
Yeah.
That's not included in this ordinance here for us, that would come at a later time.
But I, those maps cover it, you know, essentially, the, uh, where that would be located. So, um, and, you know, what, what I need to do is I need to go in and clean those lines up and create, you know, sort of delineate where it is parcel-wise, probably by the parcel or by the street, so.
Yeah, I, I, my, my understanding earlier when we discussed this, that, that each overlay district would come, would be designated and come before us.
Mm-hmm.
For action, um, and be further public input into that.
Mm-hmm.
And that the designation of those districts on the map is not yet, that's not part of what's proposed before us.
Hmm, okay, interesting, okay, yeah, um, yeah, we could, we will probably, I mean, this, this is a public hearing for that. But.
May I ask?
Yes.
Um, is it, so is it in your intent to do the whole thing as a package? And get approval for overlay and the boundaries? And I think that sounds like a good idea, maybe we need to drop back and consider that.
Okay.
Um, that sounds like a good idea to have a whole package that council could, uh, because if they don't know what the boundaries are, maybe they don't, um, maybe they don't feel right about it.
Okay, you know, I mean, I think the overlay would be, would be great in that I could come back to you with the boundaries. I mean, I, those give, those are the boundaries to give you the general idea, but.
If you're going with these, then I think we need to consider that as part of the package today.
Okay.
Is, is this what you're going to go with?
Yeah.
Maybe a reference, maybe a section five point whatever referencing the map, overlay.
Yeah, I mean, I would include that too.
Yeah. That sounds good.
I have one.
Mm-hmm.
So on, on a car park language, it's just vague, it just says encourage, you know, car parking. It doesn't say like how many, if you do a fourplex, are you going to be required to four car parks? What are going to be the dimensions of those car parks?
Mm-hmm.
Um, where, where are those level of detail, especially as in the infield?
Mm-hmm.
Where street parking is.
What, what I would, what I would do is, um, they would follow the, the parking standards as they are right now in the code, but they could, if they wanted to, apply for a parking reduction, depending on, I guess, what they have. I'm still trying to work on that part of it, that part of the code.
And then also the common space, it just says, you know, what percentage?
Mm-hmm.
If you have a four, four unit and a, and an infill, what percentage has to be common space versus, you know, foundations or what?
Yeah.
And I did have a question about this cluster, cottage cluster.
Yes.
Does the homeowner own property under the house, or is it a condo, or I don't, I don't quite understand.
Mm-hmm. Well, if, if the cottage cluster could, it could be the owner, owner owns a larger parcel, but if it was a cottage cluster with, and each, each cottage was on a two thousand five hundred square foot parcel, they would be owned by each individual person that has it.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, they, they would be sort of like a, like a, kind of following a similar, like, uh, as like a condominium possibly or something.
But the option is to own the property also?
Yeah, you could also do that. You could own it and then rent out, rent it out as well.
Melissa, do you want to speak on this currently, or is the staff representative here?
Look. Hi, good evening, I'm Melissa Hartman, I work with Emmanuel, I'm the other planner. I think what we're trying to present to you all for accomplishment is let's not lose sight of the part of why we're doing this is to have the ability to create more affordable housing, to create more, um, alternative builds. And so, um, I, I, I agree with some of the questions, that there's some more flushing out that needs to be done. But the overlay zones, um, will allow for more homes that are affordable. Um, that's the bottom line here. Both the items I'm here tonight on, on our, working towards getting us more ability to create those kinds of homes. So, having said that, um, we see the need for duplexes, triplexes. All of the fancy people in Phoenix call it the missing, missing middle, correct?
Yeah.
And, um, this is, this is a way for us to sensibly do it in specific parts of town and to regulate it, so. And um, this is, this is a way for us to sensibly do it in specific parts of town and to regulate it. So.
I'll get to you here. Oliver, here, do you have, as a staff, have any comments?
I think this is a good direction. I think if we just keep tabling and tabling, it's really, just never really going to go nowhere. Just, just to get it started and get it, get it to mayor and council to, or even to somewhere to where we could, we could fine tune it later and we could set boundaries into this, but it's a, it's, we worked really hard on, I imagine on uh, Melissa worked really hard on this just to get some started for affordable housing, which we don't have right now. There's these big open lots and you really can't do nothing, or little lots where you can't do nothing either. You can't even build something on it. Cause it's slower, it's smaller on the square footage area to even build on. So this is going to allow for more, more housing, littler house, homes that are affordable for a certain amount of people. So.
Okay. I'll declare a public hearing open. No comments yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to pop, open this for public hearing. So anyone who wishes to speak, okay, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Yeah, I'm Bill Bonner, current with the step of Bisbee Naco. And the workforce housing program, which we are in partners with the city of Bisbee. We're trying to build affordable housing as best we can. But uh, we're really excited about the planning and zoning overlay because this will allow us to build smaller homes that are more affordable, which we're unable to do now since we're just, you know, restricted to one house per lot. So, but we would like, we like the idea of what triplexes or cottage clusters, they'd be smaller homes, maybe six hundred square feet, but we might be able to sell them for a hundred thousand dollars, which is much more affordable than what we're able to do now. And we're also, I mean, the program is great, but we're kind of bleeding money. It's not, you know, we're just, we're not profitable. So we really need to bring it back to, we don't want to make a profit, but we don't really, can't afford to lose more money doing it. So I, I feel that the, the rezoning where we could go with smaller homes would be uh, much more viable, of course. No, we keep going so we don't have to shut the program down.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Are there any other, have we got any written comments, any other public hearing input? Okay, then I close the public hearing. We're now open for commission discussion, questions?
I agree with Melissa on that, you know, the end bill, that lowering the price of housing or happiness, it, it doesn't look like it's the entire city. It looks like it's a band along major roadways and things. We need that housing. We need those price points. What's to keep people from charging more, I guess, is what just popped into my head.
Yeah. Is there a, I took, uh, actually, yes, good question. Um, I, I think it's, I think the size of the home would, would dictate it frankly, that it could, would be more affordable. If any developer doesn't do their due diligence when they come here and see what the rate of pay and everything is, then, then frankly, from my planning perspective and going to the city people, they're not going to be who we're going to work with. It's, it's really that simple.
Well, that does strike me that this is for the individual.
It could be, it could be for, someone could own on four. I mean, I, I think we can't, I don't want to limit it either. Cause workforce housing means a couple of things. What we're doing in the program with them, but the other need that's going to approach us quickly with the opening and the second border entry and some of the other construction projects is that those workers are going to need a reasonable and, and inexpensive place to stay on a, you know, month, month or, or six months or whatever. And that, one of the things that we're looking at with this is that that could accommodate, depending on who makes the property, both of those sides.
I do hear that rental is a tough thing in Bisbee, you know, to find.
Yeah, it's pretty soon we have a consulting.
Okay, I have a question then. What, what preclude you from? Then say, I've got six hundred grand, so I've just got to buy six of them. And do a V and V thing, one, so that kind of.
That is a problem.
So that's one. And the, the second one is, yeah, the, the price point is, I think you're looking for affordable housing for a number of reasons. One of them is the workers in Bisbee are right now saddled with efficiency apartment for eleven hundred dollars. And they can't do that and be a, you know, work at the bar or the restaurant or your employees. So I, I don't know how you balance that, how you make sure that these are available to the actual people that you're targeting.
So here's the, I think I have, I want to address that, which is that I think that with more supply, there is less demand and so that really helps keep your prices at an even keel. You know, I also think that if you can build a, a number of affordable units, it also helps keep the prices lower. But, cause right now what's happening within the, the country wide, in Bisbee especially, is that there is so little supply that everything becomes this coveted commodity, right? So what this does is it, it makes it so that people can, if they own a parcel, they own six, six thousand square feet, they have a house. And they can, you know, add on to their house or add some more units. And they can rent them out as individuals, as opposed to something like having a big developer come in and build a big subdivision, right? And it's all brand new and then they're charging a lot of money. It's their luxury subdivision or something. So really, it's allowing individuals on each parcel, somebody can buy a parcel, they can build a fourplex. They can be a small scale developer. I mean, really. So it's really about addressing just the supply side of it. You know, and I, and I think that the, the loosening of the, uh, you know, the rules can help create a level of innovation.
May I make a comment? Charles, the, a few years back, probably four years ago, we did an ADU ordinance. And everybody was afraid that it was going to turn into Airbnbs and I don't think that happened. Yeah, I think, you know, and that was in the back of my mind, even though I was pushing for the ADUs. And we really didn't get all that many people building them, did we?
No.
Yeah, so I think there's a certain organic, and I may be wrong, but balance that happens when you have certain, a certain quantity of, of a certain type of house. I mean, these aren't going to be Tucson Sabino Canyon homes, you know? They're just places people can live and, 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 you know, have some, probably some dignity about it. I know Bill and I have worked on stuff before in the past and, and that's worked out great. They're doing a great job. But I don't think it's that kind of Airbnb frantic, you know, the state. You know, because every politician in, in Arizona has an Airbnb uh, business. And they really make it hard to get away from that. You know, the, the rules are, everybody can have one, but the, the reality of it, I, and I'm looking to you because you've been in the trenches for a while, isn't that they, they go and build them and rent them.
May I add on to what Doug said? What, what you're asking is great, number one. And, and, and we always know that something may happen. But let's say, let's go back to the cottage cluster and, and, and the developer sells one, turns one into an Airbnb or whatever. I mean, they do have to register those with the city. Uh, there are regulations that are applied to them. Do I think it, it could happen? Yes. Um, but being the person that works with, mostly with the developers that come to town and want to do things, first of all, there are not many. And, and second of all, uh, they're looking at larger parcels. I think that part of the intent here is that to go back to the ADU, that it's a family member, it's, you know, your, your daughter and her baby or something like that. But just to go back to your original question, could all those things happen? Absolutely. And what we have to do once, once we recommend or pass this ordinance is make sure that we put those protections in once we get this in place.
Hey, may I, do I have a question?
Yes. That's my guy one. Yeah.
Yes.
Asked your question, my answer, sorry.
So I just want to comment that market conditions, the supply and demand will dictate what the future is. When you try to manipulate the market, somebody's going to win and somebody's going to lose. And so my point to all that is, is to, to Mr. Taylor's comment with ADUs and anything else. Unless you put very strict rules in to prohibit people as who have an ADU, a used miss or rental or whatever it is, that's just going to have collateral damage and everything else. So the purpose of putting in affordable housing is to increase the current supply of available housing. It just so happens that some of that now is going to be affordable. Time and time again, they've gone in to try to develop public housing projects. And the public housing projects only in the end turn into a disaster and you basically become slops. So I would just encourage you guys to allow and increase supply of housing. If it becomes affordable, great. If it's not affordable, then we just need to build more housing. The reason why housing prices are expensive today is because there's limited supply. If there was more supply of homes, there would be, there wouldn't be as many Airbnbs. Well, market conditions dictate what's going on. That's just my overall comment.
Am I, am I correct that the state still dictates that we can't limit Airbnbs?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the flip side. We can't do anything about it anyway.
I think Mike's right that allowing certain things to happen, not, not saying this is going to be affordable, it's that sort of, you know, that balance of uh, things work out or they don't, but they, you know, there's an opportunity. There's some light at the end of the tunnel.
There is, there is a balance too, because you can think about Airbnbs and, you know, we could, the available, the housing that we have now could all be turned into Airbnbs. Or people could build an Airbnb in their backyard and it allows for somebody to live in the houses and these other new units become Airbnbs because they're going to be either in the old existing housing or they're going to be in the new housing. So if you have more housing, then, I mean, this town can only sustain so many Airbnbs. If there's more housing, then it creates more housing for people to rent and buy and live. As opposed to all these units being tied up in Airbnb because there's such a limited supply. So it's a larger supply of Airbnbs with less housing that we have.
Well, I think that this, you know, I think Airbnbs are kind of an inflated thing anyway. I've, I've never owned one, but I, I don't think that they're the, the golden key that people think they are. But if they found that they didn't want to do an Airbnb, they could always sell it as a unit and you can only get what you can get for like a five hundred square foot home or an eight hundred square foot home.
And Melissa, didn't it?
Go, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Our workforce housing program has deed restrictions. And we only uh, can sell to, the reason it's called workforce is because only people who work in Bisbee. Those are the only folks that can buy or will be able to buy our, our affordable homes. And we do have deed restrictions about the usage and how long they have to hold on to the home before they can turn it over and sell it. So we have, Melissa, know more about that than I do.
No, you're, you're right, you're right. I think the one thing that I want to add to this is that everybody's, you, you, opening up more housing that isn't, not that I don't want my old Bisbee house, please let me preface it by that. But offering up a, a newer home for a young family is such a, such a plus. I lost my train of thought, what I was going to say. That the likelihood, what I see happening is that there'll be like four and six and eight months stays in there because of the workforce housing. So we have the availability now for somebody downtown to have their own place to live. Cause one of the things we've quickly found out during this housing study is there are people that, that work here in houses and there's four, five or six of them sharing the same house. That's up to them, but I, I do think we have to tweak this once we adopt it. I think that some of these things will happen because they just do whether you're Bisbee or Phoenix or wherever they are. And that um, I would like to see you guys approve this. I guess that's the last thing I have to say.
I have one more question.
Of course.
On the allowable commercial uses in the residential zone, the only residential zone. Each one of those commercial uses would have to somehow come back. Would that come back for a rezoning or a special use permit?
No.
It would not. Because I see in the mixed use, you know, you've got a little bit of everything, which is fine. But in the residential zone, uh, we've always talked about small neighborhood markets and cafes and hair salons, et cetera. I don't think we've ever included cocktail lounges or taverns in that conversation.
Well, I want my friends, I just want my, I just want, I just want to uh, people to be able to walk to the corner bar and tipple, tipple and not drive home. And I mean, that's, you know, and again, at, at cocktail, I mean, I could change it to tavern or small. I just don't want, yeah, not a nightclub, you know, not a band, not a bar band, band bar, whatever, you know? Like we're talking, you know, following the noise ordinances for residential zones. I mean, that's the thing. It's a very tight, you know, it's going to be regulated very tightly. But I do think that, you know, allowing for, you know, a small bar, like room four bar, it's a tiny little,
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, re- really, yeah, I, I'm not looking to recreate old Bisbee in a residential zone. I'm not trying to do brewery gulch down here, you know? I'm, I'm thinking corner, small bar.
But if we're allowing it, how can, how do we restrict it?
I mean, we could add additional, additional restrictions on it.
I'm just thinking of a neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's a residential neighborhood and, and, you know, residential neighborhoods already have hair salons, et cetera.
Do they?
Well, if you look at most college towns, they have this mix. You know, they'll have like in ASU, they'll have Casey Moore's Night in Ash. It's built out of a nineteen twenties house. And it's a bar, Irish pub and a restaurant. And it's been in that neighborhood since far before I was ever born. And people walk to it in and out. It doesn't seem to have, it seems to have a very positive effect, resident there.
Yeah. One, one thing I think would be great in this mix, and I did see it, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but work live for artists, I think, you know, where they could have a little gallery in a ten by ten or a ten by twelve room on the ground floor and, and uh, and live upstairs or live in back or whatever. I don't, but I think I'm hearing, and this is anecdotal, but I'm hearing that a lot of artists are being pushed out.
Yeah.
Oh, and that, I, I grew up in Manhattan and, you know, I ended up living in Queens because you could go that way, but um, that happens. You guess, they call it gentrification. I don't like to use that, but.
Right. But I think you're right there that, that, that by allowing this, we have all of those different kinds of opportunities. Someone could come in and buy a cottage cluster or fourplex or whatever it is and say, I'm making this artistic housing. Here's what you're going to play every month. So I think, I think all your questions are valid.
The one I really like is um, over by you. That condo where the four ladies got together.
Oh, yeah, the Golden, the Golden Girls.
Yeah, I want to live. Golden Girls, I love that show. That, you know, what a wonderful thing. Take an old house, turn it into, what was it, four condos?
Yeah.
It was a great thing. And, you know, it didn't work out quite as well because, you know, life ends.
There's one for sale.
Yeah.
And it's gorgeous, by the way.
Yeah, I've seen it.
I have one more question for the building inspector.
Yes.
So within this plan, does
So within this plan, does it then allow for, I've seen, by the way, developments, as you were stating, they have a business on the bottom, their hair, their insurance salesman, their legal services, their CPAs. And then they have the condo above, and they live above it. So is that allowed?
Correct.
In, in the one, in the, on the map, there's an orange zone, and there's a green zone. And the green zone is residential, allowing more, and then the orange zone would allow that.
That's a mix.
Yeah, and that's more, that's along the major, like, Naco Highway, 92. It's, it doesn't really go into the neighborhoods.
Yeah, we want that too, 'cause people could have their business, take care of it, be real close to their business. And that's important to all, to owners, to owners of the business.
Cuts down on driving.
That's pride of ownership.
Yeah.
So I have one, I'm trying to dive into the weeds here, we might figure it out later. We have, we're introducing triplexes, duplexes, fourplexes, and we have the ADU. How do those play together?
Well, there are rules for how many units you can have on each side of property. So for example, I'll just give you an example. Uh, if you have a, uh, a lot, and, uh, cottage clusters, for example, if you are between 2,500 and 5,999 square feet, you can have four units only. So no ADUs can be added to that, right?
Or you could have three units and one ADU, right?
You could. I mean, at that point, I feel like you're kinda splitting hairs a little bit, but yes, you, you know, you totally could.
It's just for, you know, to get it into our heads.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what's the distinction, right? Is a du- duplex has the same roof line, or is it a single family with an ADU? Is that a duplex?
Hmm, that's gonna be a single ADU, go ahead.
And I think the ADUs is gonna be for the areas that are in the, in this new layer too. So the ADUs will just address the rest of the town, and like, and the infill's gonna be different. Or in the overlay, it's gonna be different, you know. So, uh, 'cause this is only slivers of the town, it's not all of it.
Yeah.
So wherever it's not, still, the ADUs, the rules and regulations will apply to them in that area. And like, like you said, splitting hairs in, in this area, you know, to say you could call it really whatever.
And if you had an existing home with the, in the overlay zone, you could add an ADU for a family member, correct?
Yeah, you can, it's current.
Can, can you divide the property if you have, let's say you have a 4,000, uh, 4,000 square foot lot, and you have a house on that, and there's room within the setbacks and all that? Can you divide that into a two, 2,000?
Nope, because the minimum lot size is 2,500.
Okay, so let, okay, so let's say you have a 5,000 square foot lot, can you divide that, and then still?
Yeah.
So maybe you don't, you don't go the route of the ADU, because you can sell the house.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I could, I agree that the word artist studio needs to be somewhere in there.
Artist studio?
Plus, in terms of attractiveness, and I guess I also am somewhat hesitant in terms of a bar.
Yeah, okay.
What the initial reaction is gonna be.
The chances of, of opening a bar now, what are, is that?
There must be another word for it that makes it, you know, what's a?
Wine bar? Pub, public house?
Speedy, I don't know, but, you know, something that would seem a little less intrusive than a bar, you know?
What I'm thinking of potentially, a public house, I mean, we don't really have a word for it, but, you know, whenever you go to a place in Portland, or maybe even Tucson sometimes, they'll have cafes that serve beer and wine, and it's, it's.
Maybe it's a cafe, it's, you know, that, 'cause cafe, I think implies that it has alcohol, but.
Why don't we have cafe and small restaurant?
Yeah, and I think that, that's a good.
Yeah, you could do that. We, we could just strike the bar, ta- cocktail lounge out of there, if you're afraid that you're gonna like, have, you know, too much of that going in.
I'd like to delete that and include artist studios.
Okay, we'll do.
A certain range, right?
Would they be subject to the zoning of the area anyway?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's likely suggests they open in this, really has no regard to what they possibly can and cannot do.
Well.
But they're setting up the zoning for the overlay district.
So it, you're, you're gonna include the underlying zoning will be allowed, and also the new zoning will expand the uses, and suggest uses, right? So in, in, um, in the mixed use zone, you know, a lot of that, especially in San Jose, is already C2, which allows zero lot line setbacks, it allows all of the businesses that I included in here, plus bars and everything, so, and, but again, that's along the highway, you know. So you're, i- i- it's really, the, the mixed use designing is more of a suggestion than allowing. So essentially allowing us to, be like, hey, have you considered this design choice? Have you considered including housing in, in your project? For, if you're gonna build a big box store, could you include a layer of housing above it, you know?
There's also the economics of trying to run a business. I own a restaurant, and it, it's pretty hard to do it even in a good sized restaurant.
Yeah.
So it might be dictated by the size of the space anyway.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have, there's, very rarely do you see, now, you did mention that bar in the gulch, the, uh.
Room four.
Yeah, room four.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how they make money, maybe they.
They have a hotel connected to it.
Yeah, they have a whole hotel there, but I'm, I'm thinking, something that size, you just can't set that up and say, I'm the, this guy knows all about not in front of a restaurant, you know? So I, I think it would, not unlike the Airbnb's, it'll work itself out.
Yeah, you know, I, I also, again, I, I, I think that when this happens, it's gonna be very incremental. And as a matter of fact, it probably would happen in a way that would be slow enough moving that I'd not, my goal is not to create some major disruption in the city of Bisbee, but to ease into a change, you know? And I, because like, based on the ADUs, you don't see a lot of people building them, although they, you know, slowly coming in, hopefully, and, uh, you, uh, even with the, um, yeah, I'm just trying to go for the incremental development.
Well, this is the same problem I had back advocating for the ADUs. I liked the idea, but I was really apprehensive that everybody in town would have an ADU. That did not happen, so that slow growth you're talking about, I think is really the reality.
Yeah, and Douglas actually, did I tell you all that Douglas adopted a very similar code, like, two years ago? Maybe I didn't mention that. So they have, um, they created a overlay zone that really is pretty similar to this. And, um, I don't really know, you know, if they've had any disruptions, or.
But they have that, that portal that's being built, bigger than Naco.
Right, it's gonna be six to seven miles outside of town, so it's right smack in the middle between.
But they need worker housing.
Yes.
You know, all the people that work, you know, all, and I don't mean worker, like, building.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, they, they need, and I've, I watch, one of my weird hobbies is to read real estate ads. And with Alicia, she, I know she does. And I've noticed Douglas does not go down in price.
Yeah, right, I know.
Been checking it out, too.
See, maybe we're all closet realtors.
It's, it's supply, demand, the cost to build, I mean, every, minimum wage's $15 an hour.
Yeah.
You know, it's not $7 an hour anymore.
Yeah. So you can buy two cartons of eggs every hour.
I remember it was $100 a month. I wasn't alive then, but, uh.
I was.
It was a good time, but relative to what you're making, it's still proportional to today.
I don't think, I think we have more apprehension than we need to have. I, that's my gut, because I've sat through this before.
Another editorial, editorial question, I guess, is 5.5.8. The sentence at the bottom of the page seems to just end.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense, doesn't really connect in that paragraph.
One sec.
Something missing there, I don't know what. Is that my perception only?
So 5.5.8, impact fees?
Huh? Yeah, impact fee, there is one line there, and there's a colon.
Yeah, and then, and then it continues on the rest of the, the next page.
Yeah, I know, but it's not connected, it doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me as I read.
Oh, okay, uh, yeah, okay, I'll look in that, I'll look and see if I can make that clear.
There's something missing, or it's.
Yeah, um, such as living multi-family. Yeah, I guess I, I, I folded that because it's for the infill incentive, and, essentially, it's connected to that, but I can see how that could be confusing, so I'll fix that.
Probably what you have to do is get it back on that page.
Yeah.
Also, I guess I did not realize that we were proposing to adopt the map.
Oh.
And I guess I'm uncomfortable with that.
Oh, okay.
Personally. And I would rather than move forward with this change to our ordinance,
Mm-hmm.
that, and, or telling the public this is coming, and as the actual maps will be defined in clarity uh, at a later time, when we can actually meet with people in those respective communities and so forth.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
And, and if we, you know, you're talking about the maps are not yet delineated in detail, and so if we were to adopt the maps at this point, they're incomplete. So I'm, and I'm uncomfortable with that, so anyway, I, uh, this is a way of presenting this to the public, this is a avenue that we're going towards, and there will still be more opportunity for input in terms of defining each of the overlay districts, in terms of the actual ge- the boundary, the geographic boundaries of each one.
I see.
And, and discussing that as a, as a separate, uh, actual, I don't know, was this presented in terms of the public hearing?
This is a public hearing.
The announcement, uh, the public announcement, did the actual maps associate with that?
I mean, there was an announcement for the public hearing about the overlay zones. But there, there wasn't maps, it was just essentially a text that said we were, you know, adopting these overlays.
Yeah, when you, when you see, like, between commercial and residential in R1, there's little teeth, you know, 'cause it doesn't, it's not a line you can just draw through, so it's a property. So if the property has, half of it is commercial, and half of it is residential one, that usually doesn't happen, then it sort of follows the property lines.
But it does happen here.
Oh, does it?
'Cause I just got a phone call about a property, and half of it is in C2, and half of it's in R1. And they called me, and they're like, hey, what i- can we do here, down on Naco Highway?
Okay, now, yeah, maybe that, I was just trying to clarify that maybe that was a reason to go back in and redo the, uh, the map, and then present the map at a later, later date to the, 'cause you'll have the, the buy-in of the council.
Yeah.
Because why do it if you don't?
Yeah.
And then, uh, you could bring the maps back to be voted on, I don't see any problem in that.
Yeah, okay, we could totally.
It's good to do a public hearing on the maps.
Yeah, yeah, that, well, that, and what Doug said about getting the input of the.
Right.
The neighbors is really important. They may not even know that this is going through their neighborhood.
So we're just gonna break it into two pieces, there's the overlay zones, and then there's the adoption of.
Of the actual physical map of the.
Mm-hmm.
Understood.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I will do that. I will go back and I'll dig, um, tighten those maps up parcel by parcel.
When do you present this to the city?
Well, in the next council meeting.
On the third?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 'cause I was thinking maybe you just pull back, but, but, obviously, it, it probably just gives a forward momentum, and present the, the written, and then the graphic.
It ain't perfect, but we're getting.
Nothing ever is.
It's a good start, in the right direction, and we could fine tune this.
And we could play with it all the time, and, and, you know, be apprehensive and never get it pushed toward the city.
Yeah, I think they could adopt the ordinance with the caveat of going back down the overlay zone. So I think you could still go on your timeline and just put it into two sections.
Yeah, we could just, the next meeting could have a public hearing on the, the map.
Yeah, just the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, 'cause my goal is to make the Bisbee a better place, and really include its, and really just build upon its eclectic charm.
And we know that, and we appreciate that.
And, yeah, and incremental.
We not hear that very often, but we do.
You know, 'cause like, this is, this is my, this is my way of finding a way to have building happening without a big subdivision out of the west end of town, take over, you know, hundreds of acres, and everybody's gonna be upset about that, you know?
Not unlike what Bill's doing with Step Up, it, it's gonna help people, I think, you know, that's my gut.
And I'll say one final thing, that as the chair of the Board of Variances, part of where both these two items that we're bringing here tonight came, because in the Board of Variances, very similar situations have come to us, and our codes did not accommodate them. So we do live in an era, a new era of alternative housing, because whether it's less, some, some of the tiny homes aren't, but, you know, whether it's a tiny home, it's, it's a manufactured home now that, that adheres to HUD regulations. This is what's coming into our community, one by one, mind you. But as they started coming in and going to the Board of Variances, we did not have regulations to cover it, and we needed to deny it. So the, this item is one of the couple of items that we are putting forward to make an effort to allow for alternative, more cost-effective, and more housing.
Yeah, one word comes to mind, bar to minion.
Yeah.
Just went over inside of it. Yep, it's kinda cool, too.
It is kinda, oh, don't get me started. I love it.
Yeah, that's great, I was talking.
Andy, you have more?
That brings, that just brought to mind something else, when we were talking about storage containers being put in people's backyards. Uh, so many people talked at that meeting about storage containers being used as dwellings. And I know it's not on here, and I'm wondering if it's not on here purposely, or we just kind of ignore it.
Most likely it would fall under the category of manufactured homes, wouldn't it?
Nah, that's a tricky one.
It's not a Wilson, it doesn't have an axle, so whatever.
Yeah.
Here like that, but isn't it, didn't, was it, I thought when we were talking about, didn't you say it was a building material or a joke? Yeah, it's, it could be a building material, there's, they gotta meet certain criteria, but it can be, it can be turned into a.
Yeah, I remember.
Into a, a house, or.
There's a lot of hoops to jump through in order to do that.
Right, but they might be.
This, this isn't, this, this ordinance actually, would, it wouldn't cover it, would it?
It, uh, it would just, they would have to meet the certain house, uh, certain criteria of the, of the IVC, IRC, you know, of that.
Which is.
To have a living space, which is a whole nother.
But there are examples in the world of that.
Yeah, and there's nice ones, there's beautiful ones, you know, there's been a couple proposed here, so.
It's not as cost-effective as people think.
Yeah.
It's like a window, that's right.
There's one in Bastrop, Texas, and it's very nice, but it costs a lot.
Yeah.
Are we ready for a motion? Again, I think there's consensus that we move forward with the ordinance, and start off the mapping to a later time, and we had the word, deleted word bar, and had the word artist studio.
I second.
Yes.
Well.
Oh, you, oh, I was hoping that was the motion, um, what he said. Um, okay, I make a motion, um, I don't remember, oops, sorry. Okay, is this number two?
We're on three.
We're on three, okay. Um, no, we're on, we're on two.
Three, two.
Oh, on page three.
No, no, I, I, I agenda three.
Oh, I agenda three, okay. Um, oh, it was just agenda three. I move that we, um, I move that we recommend to the mayor and council, uh, consideration of the proposed amendment to the zoning code, Article Five, specific planned zoning by adding, uh, section 5.4 infill residential overlay zone, and 5.5 mixed use infill zone, and that we take out the tavern and bar.
What was that?
Cocktail lounge.
Co- uh, tavern and cocktail lounge, and add, uh, artist, work, live.
Yeah, artist studio.
Artist studios and, yeah, okay, just artist studio.
In the inlay residential.
I second.
Second? Okay, I'll do, uh, Paul Wohl here. Mike, are you still on? Mike?
No.
He's not here, we might have him in Charles. He's not here, we might have him in Charles.
Hi.
Okay. David Cobb?
Yeah.
Douglas Danyay? Alicia?
Yeah.
Yes. Sandy?
Yes.
Okay, Doug?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. I'll thank you guys, it's, it took a lot of us, but you know, get it together and you guys are of the opinion, that's it, so, thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
The agenda item four, discussion of possible approval to hold a public hearing regarding amendment to the city code to create a new section entitled vacant buildings and property regulations. I'll be here. Um, what we've got on here, staff for that? Sorry.
Okay, so the subject is to approve, um, to hold a public hearing regarding amendments to the city code to create a new section entitled vacant building and property regulations, were I'm that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the vacant building and property registration seeks to ensure that vacant buildings and properties be secure and properly maintained. Vacant buildings and properties are a detriment to people who live in proximity to, to the properties, an entire neighborhood and to the city's overall image as an attractive and embodied city in which to live. Own property, work or being entertained. This amendment will hold the owners of vacant buildings and properties accountable for the physical conditions of their properties and to the overall well-being of the communities and the neighborhoods in which the vacant buildings are and properties are located. It is staff's recommendation for the planning and zoning commission to hold a public hearing regarding vacant buildings and property registration code amendment.
Okay. Council comments?
May I? And you know how I feel about this, but I am going to play devil's advocate. You have the, uh, staff to do the inventory and enforcement for this, is that going to tax your, your workload?
I think with, uh, with David and Nina and Amanda and Emmanuel, I think we do have the staff to tackle this right now. And it's going to be a start and it's going to, not going to take off like that. It's going to be real slow crawling until we get it down. But I think right now we do have the staff to tackle this at the moment. And maybe on, later on, this could open up a position for someone else. Because it's going to be bringing in revenue, so.
And you guys would be, yes, and you guys would be able to expand as needed.
Correct.
At that point, okay, that's great, may I ask you another one? I have seen, I think it's here, I was trying to, when I was reading this, I was trying, it might be at Sierra Vista, but it's somewhere around here. Uh, security shutters for people who, for lack of a better word, are snowbirds. Is that, you know, the, the, you had an outline of what a vacant, the definition of a vacant lot would be or a vacant home would be.
Correct.
If they have security shutter, it said something about opaque, uh, other things that would cover windows. You know, they have a, the remote control, you know, they, they go up and down. If someone had that, would they be considering boarding up their residence?
You know, like, we're, we're more focused on the ones that are, um,
The ones that I don't, the ones that are falling down.
The ones where people just don't live there, these people that have the shutters like that, they come home, we know, once a month or, well, I'd say every couple of months. The other people that don't have that type of stuff and they have it boarded up, they don't, they're never there, you know?
Well, I did see something where you would use your judgment.
Correct.
And feedback from the homeowner. Is that something like, let's say they have a sabbatical at a university in Italy. If they go away for two years, you have a two-year limit, let's say they go away for three years for them and they don't want to sell their house, but they, um, are gone. Do they get in touch with you, is that, and then say, look, I'm, this is my house, I'm gone, but, you know, nobody's supposed to be in it.
And this was the great thing about this program, if they are gone for that long, they could designate somebody that's here where they could, that they would be responsible for that property and they could get it cleaned up or the weeds cut and, and stuff like that, that's the great thing about what Melissa and Nina and everybody have found and, and what we're trying to implement, that, would they designate somebody in this area to
Or a property manager or something, you know, they are, I think they are.
To take the responsibility and to get the yards cleaned up, just having a, a overgrown yard is a big thing, you know, for fire hazard.
Well, that's right, and the fire wise has been really big on that.
And then to check on the house if there's leaks and, you know, there's a lot of stuff.
And I have one more question, if, in that, you sort of led into it. If it's a property, you and I have discussed a property on Knocko Highway where people have dumped concrete and shrubs and stumps. If, if that happens, is that part of the abandoned property or the vacant property or something like that?
I haven't, I haven't sold a, more, more focused on buildings, but that's a good point that we could add to this is make it for properties as well, where we could hold these property owners liable for some of the stuff.
Keep the property up, or, but then how does one regulate that? But that's for you.
Yes.
Then the other part, second part of that is, what about properties like, and I hate to call it a property, but I'm going to. Like at Bisbee Road and Center, have, you know, that, you know, that, that is a crazy, is that a property, it's not abandoned, but, and what about By the, by new material?
By the terms of why I'm doing that, that corner place, it's looking abandoned now, the way that the weeds are overgrown, nobody's living there at the moment, you know? Uh, one stuff, one plate, it's in renovations right now, it's being remodeled, one has been completely remodeled, but there is, that hasn't, I would say half of that is considered abandoned or vacant, maybe in any.
So that would fall into this, so you would contact the resident?
Whoever they deem in charge of this place, because it's a whole package and whoever's deemed in there, we have a contact for them now. Because sometimes it's hard to contact people when they're traveling and
Right.
they really can't do much, but it's good that we have someone that they, they deem responsible.
So fire hazard falls into your, your bailiwickings, okay?
Other comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a few. This one is unsettling to me a little bit because I think the timelines are very tight. Fifteen days, is it business days? Because it says fifteen days.
I'm not sure about that.
So fifteen business days is three, fifteen days, some people can't get out of bed in two weeks, I don't know. I'm just saying you really need to look at that as far as, you know, how long they have to respond.
I, I think that keeping it shorter days and then giving them less time, if people respond, if they just even call us and they give us, you know, a little bit of information, that extends their time. But if they're not even trying at all, which we're going to get, it's, it gives us more teeth and people hate it when you say that there's a process and it takes forever. We don't want to draw that out no more and make it any longer, because most of these places have been sitting already for years. We don't want to give them another thirty days, sixty days to do it.
Yeah, I, I totally get that one. But there's also, we live in a world of gray, so something can be abandoned for a number of reasons. It can be abandoned because you just, you know, you lost it or you passed away or, but then it gets caught up in probate or there's things that are in judgment. And so the whole who owns it becomes a gray area and families fight over those for years. You have the place down in the Gulch, right, that's been abandoned, it's not been in use for a number of years. Since I've been here for four years, I don't think the exchange, for example, has been operational. So is that considered a vacant abandoned building? Then going down Bisbee Road, you have that old Circle K or whatever it was down there, you just have a fence around it. We have those everywhere, they're a pain. I don't even know how you would address that with, you know, a large corporation that owns something like that. So again, I just, I think this might be, this is going to be interesting.
That's long, I don't know what we do, we've been working on this for a long time.
So right now we have nothing in place. So, you know, and you have nothing in place and you have no teeth, you really could, you really can't do nothing. But if you have some sort of, of paperwork and fines and payments that people have to do, they're going to get up and start moving and doing something, but if you don't have nothing in place to, to hold them to, they're not going to do nothing.
Other comments?
Well, I have, I have a copy of the city code that 9.4 removal of litter that actually addresses neglected structures. And at some point, vacant structures, where is it? Uh, some structures determined to be vacant and unsecured and then it talks to vacant and secured. So how, how does this work into this or how does this work into this? And one other question, on a piece of personal property that has, is vacant, it's unoccupied, it's boarded up, it, so it meets that standard. If weeds aren't a factor, what, what, how can we compel the owner to pay us fines or do something about it if it's private property and it's boarded appropriately?
Now, if it's, if it's boarded appropriately, other than the registration where, where there's not something for the guys to enforce at this point, to answer your question, but we do want all of them to register and whether or not they get additional fines, it will be determined. So then it's.
What's the purpose of the registration?
Okay, but, um, when we did, when we had our census, which is now pretty old, one of the things that, that was, the city of Bisbee, it was reported that there were over eight hundred and fifty vacant and abandoned buildings. Vacant and abandoned buildings are the blights of neighborhoods, we've talked about this. And as we did research on this, we, we, and we did our research in very, I, cities that were comparable, that what the registration piece does is number one, creates the fines, gets you, generates a little bit of revenue so that you can, you can do this and it begins to give you a hammer to either, so you could offer up, uh, an owner that's registered that says, look, I can't fix this, which is typically what happens. Well, with a program like this, they can donate it, they can give it to Step Up, they can give it to the city, we can offer it up for sale, we can take the whole thing down. And it's the revenue from the registrations and the fines that, now it'll take a year or two that could fund that. We didn't believe there were eight hundred and fifty vacant and abandoned, so one of the things that the inspectors have started doing is re, relooking and creating a list. And so we wanted there to be accountability. As you know, if you look in Saginaw or Bakerville or lots of other neighborhoods, these homes have, nothing is, they're unsafe, they're all of those things and they're ruining the neighborhood. So this is a way to try and help with that. Let me go real quickly, now we, yeah, we did simply ask the question about time, was that you? Do we have, you know, is there staff and time to do this?
Oh, pretty, yes.
Yes, I'm going back on the other question. So we looked at many communities and this that we've put together is a kind of a, a, a conglomeration of a few other, um, communities and then adapted it to ourselves. So the ladies, Amanda and Nina, we actually did run-throughs and timed them and we also had costed out that staff time for, for this fill-out and felt very comfortable before we came to you that they, we do have the manpower to do this. Now, am I going to say that all these registrations are going to happen overnight? Of course not, but, um, we're, we're, we're pretty pleased with what we've done so far to try and, um, at least do something, generate a little revenue, make owners responsible. He'll attest to this, even when we are able to get an abandoned house, it's a quick claim deed, it's this, it's that and, and so this is a way to even streamline that. A neighbor may want that lot next door and they may, we may be, be able to say, hey, here's how much we have, have in it and, and purchase it, so. We've taken a long-term look at this and, um, kind of incorporated it in with the housing crisis.
Yeah. Well, what, what we didn't want to do is the optics of like eight years ago when they were talking about taking homes and people.
Yeah, this isn't that.
That was really, no, I know, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, yes, yes.
That was the nightmare that we wanted to cut past.
Yes, yes.
I just want to answer one of your questions, if they do board it up and it, and it is being maintained in a proper way, then that's, that's what, this is, that's a great thing.
But they still have to pay.
They still have to register, of course, to have your house in that state and it's going to encourage them to either, you know, get rid of it or renovate it or, you know, rent it out or fix it up or renovate it. It's not a punishment, so.
So I, I bought one of these. They're next door, um, it's causing insurance problems. What, so, so this is essentially, I don't want to call it tax, but it's another tax, right? I as an owner have to come register this building that I've inherited, that's a rescue. What's the incentive for me to do that? What's the penalty if I don't? How are you going to know? Because there's the county assessor that has a designation for vacant secondary home. Like how does this additional registration correlate to that and what's the incentive? And how do you register if it's a probate situation? Who, how, they're not here.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you, um, that it, it's going to be up to the property owners. It's going to be much like our Airbnbs on the registration to begin with. That the, the inspectors will then go out and look at the property and they will determine if it even falls under this category. And then we will contact the owner and we will tell them about the initial fee. Now, this place, this place has got to be vacant, you know, really vacant and abandoned and unsafe, so I don't, you know, I don't know if yours is. As far as the assessor's records, I mean, I think we do those comparisons, don't we? Yeah, yeah.
Do we still have a list of critical buildings, I mean?
Yes, we do.
That was a key, uh, really long, yeah.
Yes, we do.
And that wasn't eight hundred, but that was over, I think it was over seventy. And he, he put down what?
Right.
It was quite a bit, and you'd be surprised that this stuff was created back then. You, if you look at it now, like twenty-five percent of them have already been fixed and renovated and has it been repaired. So just even reaching out and went to a couple of letters that did get light of fire under them to get it fixed up, so. It was a good thing. But like, if, like for your question, it's, we're going to have to fine tune those things to see what we can do. It's, we don't have it nailed down. This is the start of a new program that we're hoping will, will encourage people to fix up their houses or even fix up the abandoned ones or tear down the ones that are past, past that, you know, past repair, so.
So this is the city engaging with homeowners, telling them, hey, you need to register.
Right.
And if they say no, bye, then what?
We need a, we just need a point of contact there, so once we contact them, now we have ways to, there's other methods that we do to, to where we give violations and notices and all that, we don't want that. This is, this is a step you get mad about the house next to them, you know, so. It's all about the community and people have to look at some of these houses every day, that's, that's my stuff.
And we have sent all this to the attorney. We've looked at other communities that do very similar programs. Some of those communities that are four, five, six years down the line, then utilize the money to. then utilize the money to, you know, scrape off the house or, you know, whatever needs to be. I know in New Mexico, they, they, they have, they, they do all of this and then they, then they scrape the house and then they put it on an auction block or a website or something. So again, it, it can be complicated, but we, we feel like we needed to bring something forward to you because as we've been doing the renovations in the neighborhoods and, and, you know, we're getting ready to complete another seven homes in Saginaw for renovations. And the, the Step Up has done, we've done five or six homes in there. We've made this huge difference in the neighborhood. And more and more, what we hear from the neighbors is, can't you do something about that house down there? It needs to be tore down. And at this juncture, before something like this, we had no, no way to do anything. We've even attempted to buy the one on the corner that you talked about. Well, that, that's not gonna work out. So how, that could be a very good candidate if this gets adopted to, to go back to and say, all right, well, you know, it's fines now, but you could sell it to Step Up real cheap.
I have a question.
Certainly.
Do you have the buying of the judge? Because I know when Joe was doing this, it was hard to get anyone to, to task. Does this bring the people in and is the judge on board? I love that the city attorney's on board, but is the judge on board?
We haven't talked about the judge.
This is just the beginning stage of this, of trying to get this program off the ground.
This is our research, our meetings and our preliminary work that we were bringing to you all first.
I just didn't wanna see what I saw with Joe was that, you know, it's frustrating because if we had a, and I'm not blaming the judge, I'm just saying that if we had an ordinance that nobody paid attention to, what's the point of Joe, what's the point of having the ordinance? I want to get some more judge right out there talking to the people or whatever.
No, I think that's a great point. Part of why we got to this place was that we have added staff. And as they began to list the, the, the properties, we, I think we felt like we needed some teeth to go along with it. So that's, it kinda was born out of that and then taking a look at what other communities are doing. And we really just did our meetings and we did a lot of work on this. Yeah, we did research on other communities.
I have a question for you.
Certainly.
So if a, if a home or business is damaged by, you know, force majeure, just wind or rain or fire or whatever, what is the timelines in here for those folks? So their house kind of, it's burned down and it just, cause all this stuff is there. It takes a while for the insurance to do its thing and then you're supposed to get in there and knock it out. But when it doesn't happen, when does it become without abandon state? When, when is the trigger?
I don't think we have, you know.
Oh, yeah, bother.
We're not ready to accommodate that yet. So what, the scenario that you are talking about was fire or something. The first thing we would do, because number one, put out the fire, but we would locate the owner and have to make them register. Now, we're fully aware that insurance, and we would, we're gonna talk to them. If they had plans, once the insurance came in, weren't, there's, you know, other than asking them to do their regular due diligence so that the house was not dangerous, we're gonna leave them alone. We're not, we're not out there to every month, pay your, pay your fee kind of thing. We will look at these on an individual basis, depending on how they got to the place that they got to. This, the intent that we looked at this ordinance for was for these longstanding, dilapidated, dangerous homes in some of our neighborhoods. That's really what our intent was, to put some teeth in that. Understand what you're saying and we would still want them to register, but we're not necessarily going after them with fines or anything based on what the inspectors say. Well, you know, we'll have, we'll have our meetings on, on, on these and while they're waiting for insurance and yes, we've contacted them. Well, they're good, they're good to go at that point. Now, if thirty or sixty days goes by and that, they haven't boarded up or done what they need to do, you know, we'll go back to them and say, hey, when are you gonna do this?
Cause with this registration, they're gonna have to propose a plan. If they don't execute that plan and whatever timeline they give us, then we go back and we just talk to them or we, we, that's, we iron it out there. But we just need a plan. There's no plan right now.
I have to confess that I'm very frustrated with this. I think you're yodeling up a stump. My expression is. I've been on the, on the planning and zoning commission prior to being on the council and then six years on the council now here. This has been a continuing problem. My understanding is that the, whatever the section of the, I don't have my terminology correct, the International Building Code deals with dilapidated structures. We have the, we do now have the legal wherewithal to deal with these. We also have had or have now a building or a fire inspector who does not inspect buildings. I mean, some of this I understand in terms of certainly the legal process of serving someone notice on a dilapidated building. It's certainly, you know, there, there's, the law kinda protects the property owner in terms of the, you know, the, the, the city does not come in and take aggressive action. But anyway, this can be delayed out and it just takes someone who's on that, an attorney and someone else who just takes case by case and pursues this. And certainly, you know, Danielle Bouchavey certainly tried in terms of the private individual in terms of trying to negotiate, to purchase some of these properties. We've got other people who've come in and tried to do that with less success. I don't feel that this is gonna do any more benefit. I mean, I think we have the teeth now. I, I, certainly I called the police chief or fire chief on several occasions saying, why aren't we inspecting this building? It's a fire hazard. I mean, not only is it, you know, is, is it a eyesore, but it's a serious, you know, I even heard firemen tell me, I know where the next fire is gonna be. I mean, what kind of attitude is that? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm very frustrated by this. I've been at this for a long time and I think this is yodeling up a stump. I mean, we've got the, we've got the ability to do it now if we just have the will to do it. And it, and, and again, I understand why it's delayed. I mean, I, you know, why, you know, it takes somebody on top of this and just keeps pursuing this. And we always also, I mean, Joe was always, work was good in terms of what we call the friendly, the friendly letter first, you know, and we need to continue that approach in terms of the friendly letter approach. And I think going in and saying, we're gonna charge you a, a fee and able to maintain your dilapidated building.
But i- isn't it a little, little different now that you have additional staffing resources that, that will enable you to follow through with, with these notifications and pushing the issue?
Again, that's, that's always been the limitation in terms of having staff support to do that. Has always been my understanding that we have the wherewithal, I mean, we have the legal rights to pursue this, both as in terms of the Uniform Building Code as well as the fire inspections.
We, we hit some roadblocks in that and we, well, we gotta iron that out. And if, you know, if we do move forward with this, this is gonna help us a lot with that process to get it ironed down.
Well, if you tell me that, I'm willing to go along with this. But I'm just telling you my frustration. I've been on this for twenty, thirty years and, and it only, you know, it's only done by just case by case in terms of pursuing it through the courts, if that's necessary. But there certainly is, is kind of totally mind-blowing. I mean, if people have a property that has some value and you can't find anybody who will claim that they own it and able to buy it from them. I mean, I, I mean, I, it just, you know, we're talking about affordable housing and here's, there's properties that, you know, could be developed. And I really applaud what Step Up Bisbee is doing. I mean, we're so much ahead of everybody else in terms of addressing these issues. But if you say that this will help you, then I'm willing to do this, but I don't think it's gonna help.
This is gonna help us in a way where we could actually, with the funds too that we have, we could actually find where these people live and have, we could actually pay some of the, somebody to, to, to give them a certified letter or something. Right now, we don't have, we don't have funds to do that either. You know, if someone lived in New York or something, maybe wanting to give them a registered solo citation or a notice of violation, we have to have serve them paper, you know, fees, notice of in person.
But again, you have the legal authority to do that now.
Yeah, but we didn't have the funds and-
Well, but I mean, that's, that's a different issue. If you say we have the funds now, then we need to pursue that with the legal authority that we already have, which is the uniform, well, the section of the Uniform Legal. I mean, I don't, I can't remember the terminology of that deals with dilapidated structures. And likewise, the fire inspector. I mean, I just don't understand why we're not more aggressive there.
Correct. And Pete's correct. Our staffing now, more personnel, we're gonna be more on these. Like when you're just doing building inspections, you're too busy just doing that. It takes over, you know, the household. So now with the code enforcement and, and another staff on board, it's gonna help out tremendously where they could just focus on this.
Well, I'd like to advocate for Havi and the entire team. We have, we have staff that's dedicated. I've worked with Havi back when I was city planner, but also through DRB. I, his, his action on things, I don't know David, but I know he has a good reputation. I don't know Lisa, I know Emmanuel, Nina.
Yeah, Nina, yeah.
And yeah, they're all great. I'd like to give this team a chance to go forward and I don't think they're gonna fail. That's my gut.
Well, I agree with everything you said. I think we already have the teeth to do that. And I'm afraid this is gonna make people even madder in terms of responding.
They gotta be better.
I'm responding here and again, it's not a friendly letter anymore. And so it's something else, huh?
He does send a friendly letter, still.
And we will. I mean, we're gonna, you know, put through-
And if he, anybody's gonna kick the horn, it's nice. I, I have faith in this guy kicking the horn.
I, I agree with all that. I, I, I just think we have the teeth now to move forward. And I wanna move forward. I wanna move forward. If this will help you, then let's do it. But I don't think it will. I mean, unfortunately, just do it, just do it.
We don't disagree with you.
Yes, I know, I, I know, I feel your frustration.
We got somebody on the city council here who can make it happen.
I feel your frustration too, but there's, there's another team member.
Correct. It's a lot, a lot of these calls, I mean, about them too, all the time, so you know.
Is there an ultimate, ultimatum where if they refuse to register, they refuse to pay fees?
Yeah, we're gonna stay in the court just-
And they, can there be a tax lien?
There can be a tax lien or-
Cause a lot of these people inherit these houses, they remember from that before. And then they don't pay, and then they pay a chunk, you know. But if they're chunk included, whatever fees, it would help, you know, either have them not pay anymore. Cause if you're paying a, you know, a hundred dollars a year, I don't know if the taxes on these, it's not very much to pay. But if you're, if it goes up to fifteen hundred, it might be more.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're, we're hoping to not only get an accurate list, to get a little money in from this, to be able to redo even a few of these homes and add it, you know, to affordable housing. For me, that's a win.
Yeah, that's a great win.
We get two or four of them through a program such as this. Or the neighbor says, you know what, if you take it down, I'll buy that property. So-
I'd rather see Bill take it and not scrape the earth on that because that adds to our housing stuff.
Yeah, I think the idea of registering these houses is, is really excellent because we've demolished about six houses so far.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and just, but they were just totally wipeouts. I mean, they were beyond repair. And so we demolished them and then built new structures on the lots. And what we, what we can do is go in and actually pay the back taxes and pay, pay the liens if we can obtain property. Sometimes it may spin a little bit to buy the property. But we've had problems locating the owners. We can't find out who owns these properties. And we were always could go on one on East Street in Saginaw. And the title was so convoluted and messed up, we just gave up because we couldn't get it. But we would've scraped that one and built a new house on it. So we just need help, number one, locating the proper owners so we can deal with the title on these pro, on these properties. Cause it's just been difficult. But that's, one of our objectives is to tear down dilapidated houses and either, you know, but we normally build new on the, on the lot because we wanna clean up these neighborhoods. And we just need help in doing it.
I will add to, the, the property he's talking about had our finance director, had me, I think you were involved in a little bit, but Danielle Bouchavey and Logan. So there are seven people trying to get, locate an owner and get a, get a clear title.
Anything successful?
No, we finally got to the bottom of it and the person said, no, I'm not selling.
Cause shouldn't the county have the, the-
They're not, I'm sorry, they're ve- very rarely in these older vacant homes are they accurate? Or there's been liens, or there's this, or there's that. I can give you a zillion scenarios. We have one now, we're trying to acquire, the family lives in the United Kingdom, you know. So, and, and that's not unusual. So he's right, that this, this i- is in hopes of streamlining again. If it's that two houses, eight, more houses they do in the neighborhood. But yeah, I know, there was at least five of us making calls on that last one because we really, it's a delight in the neighborhood. They're willing to scrape it and that's what we, the neighborhood wants that, we want that.
Okay, but again, I don't see how this solves that. So how does this solve that?
Well, we never even had anything registered before, so it's-
You wouldn't, you still wouldn't have it registered because they wouldn't register.
But that would be an anomaly rather than the norm.
Well, maybe, and maybe not, but that's an assumption. But what I'm trying to say is, how's this adding more government fees and, and government layers? How does that solve this? If it has a solution, then fantastic. But you never, you skipped over what I said about the fifteen days because I really don't like that number. It just seems very tight and it should at least say business days and it's gonna say days.
You could propose that in, in motion.
I'm just trying to figure out how to get it, how, so that you actually can do it. You know, you can make the-
And this is, this is, this is right here. We're, we're petitioning for it to go to public, right?
Yeah.
So this is the first time I ever talked about it and any feedback on it. So we can make those adjustments now. So this is just a, a concept and trying to get this off the ground. So we will take that in consideration to change it, yes.
Yeah, I just don't wanna make a motion on this tonight or-
I don't think there is a motion, just a discussion.
I wanna address the fifteen days that in our, in our highly educated, with lots of experience little, little group that put this together, we did look at exactly what you're talking about. And we, it could get amended. We, remember, we looked at thirty days, we looked at forty-five days. And we did a little talking and chatting. And so we came up with the fifteen days feeling like with the backup that they could enforce that. Now, if we need to change that, we easily can by the time this gets announced.
Business days.
But yeah, we, and, and I agree with you on the business days. Yeah, fifteen, yeah, business days.
Yeah.
But yeah, this is all the, the work has been done at the table with research in other communities and, and us. So this is our first preview, so.
Yeah, I love the feedback because then we, like our team, we go get back together. We'll have, we have meetings every week about it. We sit there for hours and we go over and over it. And we did pick fifteen days.
We did, and we had a long discussion about it.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. And, and, but if that's, you know, that's not-
So I have a question. So if you, if, if the homeowner rejects, no matter, like, go count sand, not give them a call. Sorry, question. So if you were, if if the homeowner rejects, no matter like, go count sand, not getting on.
Which is going to happen.
Oh, yeah, it's it's gonna happen quite a bit.
We're not oblivious to that.
So then what legal action? I mean, you had mentioned tax lien. If they, if this is in our ordinance and they're failing to comply with our legislation and they don't register, now they're in violation, what is the action? What can be done?
It says failure to comply in addition to any other statutory remedy or person, firm, corporation, or entity found guilty of violating the terms of this article shall be fined not more than seven hundred and fifty dollars nor less than a hundred dollars per day per each day for violation continues. Each day the violation continues shall be separate, shall be a separate offense. In addition to the fine, the owner or his or her agents shall be ordered to bring the structure or building into compliance with the rec- requirements of the article within fifteen days.
Okay, so great. I didn't have a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Now you're throwing more fines at me. I still don't have that money. I'm still not gonna pay it. Now what?
I'm gonna offer you a deal you can't refuse.
Well, do you, does it end up tax lien and now we're doing the three-year foreclosure situation?
And 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 it could, or it could be a property that we're interested in that neighborhood and redeveloping. And we say donate it to us, we can make this all go away.
And then they get a break for donating?
Yes.
You get a big tax break.
Yeah, they just, just as if they donated to anybody.
And this is, we don't ever wanna get to that point either. We want just these people to fix up their places and now for these, so once they fix them up, they won't have these fines no more.
So this is a residential plan?
Residential?
Not, not a business.
We did.
Commercial property.
We do have some commercial property fines for larger, we defined that by the size of the building.
Correct.
Right.
Cause we've been pretty much focused on residential.
Which we are. I'm sure truly that's that's the issue in our neighborhoods is the residential, but we didn't, like I say, define.
So should you break them into two pieces?
It is broken down.
You should have a commercial piece.
We did.
And the application has it.
Yeah, it's broken. It's broken down so far residential, it's gonna be one seventy-five for a commercial to two hundred and twenty-five. Well, it's broken down to separate, separate ones. And if it gets bigger than that and it goes up to three five, three fifty, depending on your square footage of the building.
Yes, we we did not.
And anybody who doesn't think this is appropriate, walk the back stairs up Youngblood Hill. And you'll see that this is really important.
Walk down Main Street.
Yes, well, yeah, well, that that's in the process, I would assume, so there's not gonna, that wouldn't be fine.
And I agree with you, you know, but this is, this is our attempt to move.
Okay, good. I, that's all I need to hear. I I get, I I'm not.
No, I get it.
I'm 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 very frustrated by this. I mean, I, I'm not gonna live long enough to keep this resolved. I mean, I want help every I can, but.
I do think, I do think because the city has put in time and energy with Step Up and so, you know, over fifteen, seventeen homes have been renovated
Right.
in the Saginaw area. Seven new builds from there. There's only eighty-some homes in there. We've we've touched over a third of all of those homes.
That's fantastic.
So we feel like we've made a big impact. And then here you look at every other block and there's this chunk of awfulness and danger. So that's kinda how this was born.
Melissa?
Yes.
Is there be like a timeframe where they say you abandoned this house for five years or ten years and that's it, none more? Because, I mean, some of these homes have been sitting there twenty years, twenty-five, thirty years.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I just wondered how that, if that could work into it.
We really looked at timelines specifically for abandonment, whether you're unsafe or you're not, you know.
Right.
I think it it comes down to what's the cost, right? Your, if you register, you're charged penalty. What's the cost to now meet these criteria, put the board up on the window? By the way, glass right now is shooting.
No, you're right. No, you're right.
And the cost of maybe demolishing it because it's so far gone, it's been neglected for twenty years. Okay, great, you're in DRB now. Guess what? Now you have more hands than we would. Um so I I could just see us getting very controversial very quickly. Um and then it's a cost thing, right? So you're like, hey, if you can't, you know, there's a cost of home ownership, but there's also a cost of dilapidated homeownership. And that's essentially what this teeth, these guys are proposing is is doing.
If you're complying, you don't really accrue a lot. If you're not, then that's when it gets pretty steep. We want people to comply and wanna help them, we wanna give them resources. Most of the people don't even know that there's people out there that are willing to to help or buy. Some people just didn't even know that they could sell the place cause it's so bad. People are embarrassed to even come out and say it's theirs, you know. So if we could give them some resources right off the bat and with this program, I think it'd be a good, good idea.
I'm also torn between the opinion where it talks about, you know, your electrical and then you need to maintain a certain electrical for whatever systems may be on the inside. Um hopefully, that's not part of the residential one. Uh that's what I meant by separation of residential and commercial. Because if it's residential and they've applied for a abandoned, whatever we're calling it, vacant building, I I it's my opinion that there should be no electrical. There should be no live electrical to that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Fire marshal.
And that's what we want.
Since you don't have a fire marshal who's inspecting it, you might as well put it in here that, yeah, that needs to be turned off.
And we would determine, I think, the inspections that we do in that house, we would determine if it's safe or not, no power, nothing. That's why we wanna get into these places to to see if they're really safe or not, but give us some recommendations. And set a plan, set a plan where we, they could probably hopefully execute it later on.
Good.
I agree with you on that, so directly.
Yeah, we needed the feedback.
Okay, you consensus that you're gonna bring us something in a future meeting? Okay?
Is that what the goal was?
A pub- to do a public hearing.
To, but then we're not doing anything on this way, taking.
I think the public order would be great to hear what the public would.
We wanted you to give us a public hearing and then we're gonna take all of that information.
But that public might not show that that you're aiming at.
Yeah, that's, uh, we want any, anything, so we wanna know what the public wants to hear. So that's why we want to go to a public hearing. And from there, we we adjust and we make the corrections.
Yeah, this is, no plane ready to go to council by any means. This is the first blush.
Can we say a public meeting in this, in one of the next several?
Well, I guess our recommendation is this is not an action agenda, so. So it's just, yes, we're gonna bring us something back and we put our input. Any other staff comments before we move on?
I appreciate everything you guys talked about.
Oh, thank you guys.
Well, thank you, and I agree that we have greater commitment right now than we have in the past and I wanna support that. I I am frustrated with any, you know, craft attempts in terms of doing.
We appreciate that.
Do you want a public outreach meeting or do you want a public hearing?
We want a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we could definitely.
It's gonna be an ordinance, it's gonna come before us.
As a public hearing, yes, but you mentioned a public, setting up a public.
Hearing.
Hearing, yeah.
Did I say, did I misspeak?
No, no, you didn't, but I I, you know.
We're still looking for additional input.
That you guys bring it back as a public hearing, that's what I was.
Oh, yeah, no, it's definitely gotta go before public hearing, before it passes.
Maybe even a couple, who knows?
We have Kevin, uh, Tim.
I can get Kevin here.
And just so that he hears what what's going on.
And how is future agenda items, and this is gonna be one of our future agenda items.
Yes.
Got it.
I'm pretty, may take more than one.
Informational.
And I think our zoning overlay maps was another one.
Right. Also, uh, I guess for our general information, I was reading that there were, the legislatures last year passed several bills in terms of finding a deal with with increasing, reducing the cost of housing. And and certainly one of those was in larger cities that they mandated that the center cities uh in larger cities have at least ten percent or something like that housing.
Yeah.
And that doesn't apply to us, but anyway, there was a couple pieces of legislation that was passed last year that dealt with the legislature's attempt to uh to address this issue.
And Pete and I would concur with what you're saying. When we were at League of Cities, pretty much everything was addressed to very large cities. Um even my little park that I, I was one of the very few speakers that spoke about housing in a rural area. And we had great response, didn't we?
We sure did.
Um that we're doing things like this in a town of, of, you know, less than six thousand, they're they're amazed. So um you're a hundred percent right, that everything was seventy-five thousand, hundred thousand people. So there was so much of this legislation that they were introducing to us that we couldn't do anything with it.
Yeah.
Agreed. It was frustrating to me.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move, we adjourn.
I second.
We adjourn.
Thank you. I know this was a long meeting.